Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin by reading the following notice, which has been distributed into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views in such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in destructive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. Can I now request that everyone take a moment to switch off his or her cellphone? Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. Future meetings of the Board will also be webcast live. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. On behalf of my fellow Board members and everyone at CUNY, I would like to express our deepest condolences to the families and friends of all of the victims of the attack on the Northern Illinois University campus on February 14th. May we have a moment of silence as we remember the tragic loss of life at Northern Illinois As we remember that terrible incident, our concerns go out to our colleagues and friends at Stony Brook, where we understand that this very moment, there is a bad situation brewing on that campus. We know of no loss of life as of yet, so let's all just pray that that situation will resolve itself without violence. On a much happier note, I want to formally welcome trustee Charles Shorter to this Board meeting and to this Board. Trustee Shorter has already attended a number of Board committee meetings. He brings extensive and important business experience, community leadership, and a great dedication to education to the university. So, Charles, we're very happy to welcome you to this Board.
Thank you. I should be applauding you. I can't tell you how honored I am to be a member of this Board and how excited I am both about learning a lot more from all of you and making a contribution to the growth of this amazing institution. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chancellor.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you very much. I would now -- is trustee watching?
No, yet.
See him? All right, then I would like to have the opportunity to present and move the following special resolution of appreciation for trustee Randy M. Mastrow. The copy of this motion is at the table and in your trustees' meeting book. Resolution of appreciation, Randy M. Mastrow. Whereas the Honorable Randy M. Mastrow was appointed by Mayor Rudolph Giuliani to the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York in 1999, and whereas for over eight years, he has been a dedicated trustee and has played an important role in working on behalf of CUNY's renewal, bringing his sure hand, discerning judgment, and firm commitment to quality public higher education to every university issue, and whereas he served as Chair of the Board of Trustees Standing Committee on Facilities Planning and Management since 1999, overseeing a fruitful new era of public-private initiatives, expansion of the university, and upgrades to many of our college campuses, ensuring the safety and progress of the university's students and faculty, and whereas he provided invaluable contributions to the university's academic resurgence by helping to secure effective leadership at several community colleges, chairing the City College Presidential Search in 2000, the John J. College of Criminal Justice Presidential Search Committee in 2003 and 2004, and the Search Committee for a new dean of the CUNY Law School in 2005, and as a member of the Graduate School and University Center Presidential Search Committee in 2004, and the Hunter College Presidential Search Committee in 2000. And whereas during his tenure, his profound wisdom and deep insight contributed greatly to deliberations of the Board, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to the Honorable Randy M. Mastrow for his energy, devotion, and outstanding service to the City University of New York. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for continued success in all his future public and private endeavors. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll convey a copy of this resolution to Randy, and we're looking forward to a dinner with the Chancellor to celebrate Randy's long service with us. It's a pleasure to announce that Chancellor Matthew Goldstein will receive a well-deserved communal leader award by the Jewish Community Relations Council of New York at their 2008 gala dinner being held on March 11th. Congratulations to you, Chancellor. The Board held its Brooklyn Borough hearing together with the regular Board public hearing on the February 2008 calendar on Tuesday, February 19th, 2008, at the Brooklyn Borough Hall. I very much appreciate that the hearing was chaired by trustee Sam Sutton and attended by trustees Rita DiMartino, Robert Ramos, Manfred Philip, Chancellor Goldstein, and members of the Chancellery and CUNY College Presidents in Brooklyn. A summary of the proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and the Chancellor's cabinet, and a transcript of the hearing is available in the office of the Secretary. The next Board Borough hearing will take place in Staten Island at the College of Staten Island on Monday, March 17th, 2008. I take special pleasure to note that Graduate Center Professor James Oakes, whom we welcomed to the table at our last Board member on the occasion of his appointment as distinguished professor. James Oakes has won the 2008 Lincoln Prize, one of the most important awards in the field of American history, for his book, "The Radical and the Republican: Frederick Douglass, Abraham Lincoln, and the Triumph of Anti-Slavery Politics." He shares the 2008 award with historian and diplomat Elizabeth Brown Prior. This superb book of his was commended by the Lincoln jury for using, and I quote, "new comparative framework to analyze the careers of the wartime president and the nation's most important black leader," close quote. The jury cited the author's powerful, and I quote, "powerful narrative designed for historians as well as general readers, which flows seamlessly, often with dramatic effect." So, congratulations to Professor Oakes and the Graduate Center on this important distinction. And speaking of distinctions, the 43rd Annual CUNY Athletic Conference Basketball Championships concluded on Friday night at City College, with John J. Men's Team earning their first-ever conference title with a 68-54 win over the number-one seeded Team York in front of 2,000 fans and a live New York City television audience. The Bloodhounds joined the Baruch Women, who beat Lehman 71-60 in a rematch of last year's exciting final, and thereby earning a trip to the NCAA tournament beginning next week. So, congratulations to the basketballers. A week earlier, the Hostos Men and Queensborough Women did the same when they won the CUNY Community College titles at host Queensborough. For the 32nd year, Con Edison was the sponsor of this event. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Stunius Professor of Physics at City College, Maryam P. Sarachek, has been elected to the Governing Council of the National Academy of Sciences and will serve a three-year term as a counselor beginning July 1st, 2008. The 17-member council is the governing body for the academy. Congratulations. Professor of Poetry in Hunter's College MFA Program in Creative Writing, Tom Slay, has won the prestigious 2008 Kingsley Tufts Award for his collection, Spacewalk, which comes with $100,000 prize, the largest in the nation for a mid-career poet. Congratulations. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Facility to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two CUNY Community College students were nominated to the prestigious All USA Academic First Team sponsored by Phi Theta Kappa. They will each receive a $2,500 scholarship, as well as national recognition through coverage in the USA Today newspaper. They are accounting major Morris Sheriff from the Borough of Manhattan Community College, who had the highest application score in New York State, and liberal arts biology senior Kojo Wallace of Bronx Community College. Congratulations. Twenty-four Hostos Community College licensed practical nursing students and one alumnus passed the 2007 licensure examinations with an 87.5% pass rate. The average pass rate for New York State was 81.34%. Congratulations. Three Queensborough Community College students won awards at the annual biomedical research conference for minority students for their research poster presentations. They are Frandeluth Cuevas, Microbial Sciences Award, Marie Pierre Payen, Quantitative Sciences Award, and Guy Surpris, Cell Biological Sciences Award. Hunter College Ethno-Musicology Graduate Program alumnus Jorge Arivalo Mateus earned a Grammy Award for Best Historical Album, "The Live Wire: Guthrie in Performance," 1949, and Hunter College alumna Natyala Binshetan was selected as a finalist for the Paul and Daisy Soros Fellowship for New Americans. Congratulations to you all. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university since our January 28th, 2008, meeting at the table and in your calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report on recent activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo your early comments welcoming trustee Charles Shorter. It's wonderful to see you here, trustee Shorter, and we look forward to working with you over the next several years. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start with a brief snapshot on our enrollment position, and it is splendid news. Spring enrollment has exceeded 230,000 students, the highest since 1976. Since 1999 alone, spring enrollments have increased by nearly 20%. Enrollment is up 3.1%, and FTEs are up 4.1% this spring compared to last spring, and the enrollment, most importantly, is attributable more to rising continuation rates than it is to an influx of new students, a strategy that we've been working very hard on, and it seems to be bearing fruit. Increased enrollment in the spring launches enrollment growth in the fall because of rising retention rates across the university. The fact that FTEs are growing faster than headcount means primarily that students are taking more courses than they did last year, and through our campaign for success, we have been encouraging students to take a fuller load in order to maximize the likelihood that these students not only will be retained, but indeed graduate with a baccalaureate or an associate degree. While our enrollment growth is growing, we are experiencing high academic achievers coming to this university in record numbers. At the Macaulay Honors College, for example, over 3,800 students have applied for the Fall 2008 Class, an increase of nearly 20%. This is the highest number of applications in the eight-year history of the Macaulay Honors College, and SAT scores and grade point averages are growing as well, and they're quite impressive as we speak. When we look where these students are coming from, they are coming from Stuyvesant High School in record numbers, from Brooklyn Technical High School, and the Bronx High School of Science, all in record numbers. So, those are all very good data, and we're very pleased that this university continues to have its reputation burnished with youngsters and not such young people looking at this university as a valued place to study. Let me move to give you an update on the budget process, starting with the state of New York. On January 30th, I testified before the Senate and Assembly Fiscal Committees regarding Governor Spitzer's proposed executive budget. As I have reported to this Board, the budget provides stability, and barring any further perturbations or assaults to the revenue associated with the state of New York, we should have a stable environment this year, but as I've also reported, there was no investment revenue that was provided through Governor Spitzer's executive budget. As a result, we are working very closely with the state legislature to augment the operating and capital budgets. Borough-wide meetings with legislators were held in Staten Island, Queens, Brooklyn, and Manhattan, and were organized with the help of our college presidents. The next borough-wide meeting is scheduled on February 27th in Albany. That will be organized by President Ricardo Fernandez with the Bronx legislators. I have personally written to the entire New York City delegation in the Assembly and Senate about the reasons for needed capital support, and Executive Vice Chancellor Alan Dobrin and Vice Chancellor Iris Wanschold accompanied a senior representative from the governor's office to visit CUNY colleges to see their needs firsthand, and this set of visits will be just the first of many to come so that we can fully send out very, very direct messages about the needs that we have in our infrastructure. Several weeks ago, the CUNY luncheon at the Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Caucus Conference took place on February 16th with a resounding success. This is the brainchild of Jay Hirschensohn, our senior vice chancellor and secretary. He tells me that 700 box lunches were given out, and just about everybody in the legislature and even our governor came to give greetings. So, Jay, thank you for continuing to provide that very important venue for us, and I'm going to loop back to that caucus meeting in just a minute, but first, let me give you an update on our efforts working with Mayor Bloomberg and the city council to urge improvements in the city's financial plan. I'm scheduled to testify before the New York City Higher Education and Finance Committees regarding the plan on Friday, March 14th. There will also be a City College Higher Education Committee hearing on Thursday, February 28th, regarding the status of our community colleges. Switching very quickly to a federal update, I have written to the New York Congressional delegation about President Bush's proposed federal budget for higher education focusing primarily on financial aid programs and CUNY's support for a proposed new program for worker training called Loans for Short-Term Training, and the university's opposition to proposed limits on loan forgiveness for public sector employees. The Council on Aid to Education, Mr. Chairman, released its annual fundraising survey last week, and CUNY was prominently featured in a February 20th New York Times article. Donations to this university last year, Mr. Chairman, reached $279 million. I will only remind you that when you assumed the mantle of chairmanship here at this university, we were hovering around $40 million, so that is a fairly impressive. Mr. Chairman, I just want to provide kudos to our presidents. They're the ones on the line, banging on doors, walking the streets, pleading, cajoling, and they are certainly getting the point across, so we couldn't be more delighted. And you and I, as you know, Mr. Chairman, in October or November of this year, will formally announce iteration two of our capital campaign, and it will be an impressive announcement. I can assure everybody in this room about. Next month, the Council of Presidents will participate in a day-and-a-half retreat to focus on a number of long-range topics, including fundraising, articulation, marketing, and changing demographics, workforce development, and the 2008-2012 master plan. As I previously mentioned to the Board, I am in the process of meeting with faculty at all of our campuses. Last week, I had the privilege of spending time at LaGuardia Community College. Thank you, Gail, for the very, very warm reception, and at my alma mater, thank you, Gregory Williams at CCNY. I have now visited about two-thirds of the campuses, and my pledge was to reach all of the 23 campuses by June of this year. But speaking about LaGuardia, I must again commend President Gail Mello on delivering the 2008 Robert H. Atwell Lecture at the American Council on Higher Education's 90th Annual Meeting in San Diego on February 10th. Her speech entitled "Each and All: Creating a Sustainable System of Higher Education" was greeted with uncontrolled adulation. People leapt to their feet and could not control themselves. So, Gail, there's some magic in what it is that you're saying, and everybody can -- I'd like to commend also President Carolyn Williams and Bronx Community College on hosting the 2008 World Congress and International Association of Colleges Conference from February 18th to the 20th. Over 400 delegates from 40 countries participated in a dialogue about developing global partnerships. And I'm also pleased to announce that CUNY TV continues to attract accolades. This year, it received Emmy nominations for Canopy, Art or Something Like It, and Nuiva York. So, congratulations to Bob Isaacson and the group that -- Mr. Chairman, I'd like to conclude by looping back to the CUNY luncheon at the Black Puerto Rican and Hispanic Asian Caucus. I'd like to thank trustees Phil Berry, Rita DiMartino, Frida Foster Talbert, and Robert Ramos for participating in both the luncheon and the caucus conference. But Jay Hirschensohn had a special treat for the members of that luncheon, and it had to do with hearing from a young man, Mark Smiley, who has been featured on bus and subway panels as one participant in our Look Who's Teaching and Learning at CUNY's program. Mark attended Baruch College through the SEEK program. With that small investment and a lot of hard work on Mark's part, today Mark is attending medical school at the University of Pittsburgh as the recipient of a $300,000 scholarship from the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation. What was interesting about Mark Smiley is that he is a legacy. His mother, Norma Smiley, graduated Medgar Everest College and is a registered nurse. Mark's two brothers, Gregory, graduated Kingsborough Community College and CCNY, and his brother, O'Neill, a York College graduate and owner of a construction company, they were all there. Professor Charles Mallrich of Baruch College Chemistry Department, who worked closely with Mark during his time at Baruch, was in attendance as well, as were presidents of Kathleen Waldron, Edison Jackson, Gregory Williams, were all in attendance in addition to Regina Perugia. Mark's story is a shining example of the heights a student can reach with just a small investment. So, we are going to show you a video about Mark Smiley. I promise you, there will not be a dry eye in the audience. It is only five minutes, and then we will return to the main agenda. So, CUNY TV, go to it.
Being in Jamaica, it was a good experience, very family-oriented, but there was a lot of violence there when I was born. Until when I was around seven, my mother decided that, you know what, the violence was definitely kind of getting close to home, so she decided to take the family and come to the United States. I didn't always consider going to college, and having my brother, O'Neill, who went to York, he told me about, you know, the CUNY system and kind of what they have to offer to students, and, you know, it was kind of exciting, especially being that it was affordable. I chose Baruch College because I wanted to do business, and coming here was definitely a good experience. It's different from high school, and it was definitely rewarding.
Mark and I came to Baruch at the same time, actually, so it was Fall '02, and I got the job here as a SEEK advisor, and this is my first SEEK freshman seminar class, and as the semester unfolded, I realized he was a bit different than the rest of the students. He just seemed a bit more mature and focused right from the start.
I wanted to be on Wall Street, be fancy, things like that, but from the environment that I lived in, a lot of my friends died, things of that nature, but it kind of hit close to home when I actually witnessed it one day, and that kind of changed my whole perspective on really what I want to get out of life. I felt that at that moment, I should have been able to help my friend, and it just really kind of sparked an interest in me to say, you know what, maybe I shouldn't be doing business, maybe medicine is really for me.
He came to me saying that he was speaking of transferring, he wanted to study medicine, and he didn't know if this was the right place for him. In fact, he was convinced that this was not the right place for him. In fact, he was convinced that this was not the right place for him. I went to Dr. Anselma, who's the director of the SEEK program, and I asked her about our pre-med program, and she was well aware of how good it was. In fact, Mark tells a story how she mentioned him, you know, here he could be a big fish in a small pond, or something like that. I think that's how it went. And he never forgot that. And he decided to stay.
Deciding to go, to try to go to medical school, it was a big decision. I didn't take any type of science class in high school, and so now just jumping in the science class in college with other students who were experienced science classes, it was a challenge. But it was a big reason why I was there, and I felt that, you know, if I worked hard through it, kind of got the guidance from people around me, I can make it through. And so that's what I did.
I met Mark five years ago. And, I mean, he was a student, he was enrolled in my general chemistry class, and where he, you know, he made his first impression on me, of course, was at his score on his first exam. This is where it became evident that Mark was going to be one of the top students.
I worked with Professor Mallrich in class, and also we did research together after class. And he was always available. He made himself available. And I think that's something that I see in different professors throughout the university. He was wonderful, always made himself available, really a teacher, and so I really appreciated that.
When you start talking about the academics and the research compared to the personal obstacles that Mark has overcome, these problems are perhaps more easily surmounted than the other. He's developed the work ethic and the character and the discipline that it takes to do this.
I would check, you know, the grade point average. You know, the first semester, I think it was a 3.99. I said, hmm, that shows some promise, you know. Second semester was a 4.0, hmm, promise. Third semester, 4.0, you know, so, I mean, after a while, you say, well, this is no flash in the pan, this is a serious committed student.
That was, you know, that was just fantastic news. My second reaction was, you know, I knew he could do it.
I swear, I started to cry. I mean, it was just great. You root for people like Mark, you know, you want good things to happen to him, you know, and having that scholarship was a fantastic opportunity for him.
When I found out that I received the Jack Kent Cooke Graduate School Scholarship, which would cover my entire tuition, room and board and everything, I mean, it was a relief because I feel like I don't want my career to be driven by money. I feel like I want to complete what I started, which is to kind of go back into community, give back. And because I received that scholarship, it's going to allow me to do that later on without even worrying about financial support.
Is this a great university or what? All right, we'll turn now to policy items requiring a vote. I will move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for February 25th, 2008. You'll find copies of this report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. You'll find copies of the minutes of the regular board meeting of January 28th, 2008 in your meeting books. I will move the approval of those minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, revisions to the minutes? Then all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes carry. We'll turn now to committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Academic Policy Program and Research. I'd like to call on trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this February meeting, the committee approved six policy matters, policy items. Calendar numbers 3A through 3D refer to a change in degree registration rather than a new degree program offered. For the first time in CUNY history, campuses other than the graduate school will be granted authority to confer doctoral degrees. This attests to the progress achieved by CUNY's Decade of Science Initiative and the excellence of CUNY's flagship programs. Because of the curricula and the faculty of these programs remain unchanged, these policy items are not considered new degree proposals, but rather a change in registration attribution. Calendar number 3A, the City College of New York, PhD in biomedical engineering, chemical engineering, civil engineering, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering. This resolution grants to the City College of New York the sole authority to confer doctoral degree in engineering, which will help the program achieve higher visibility and thus increase access to external funding opportunities. It will also help attract higher caliber students and faculty. This item also covers en route master of philosophy degrees that only can be earned by students enrolled in one of the doctoral programs. Since this is the first doctoral program, doctoral degree offered at City College, a master plan amendment will be required. Calendar number 3B, the City College of New York, the Graduate School and University Center, joint PhD degrees in biology, biochemistry, chemistry, and physics. And calendar number 3D, Hunter College, the Graduate School and University Center, joint PhD degrees in biology, biochemistry, chemistry, and physics. These resolutions grant to City College and Hunter College the authority to confer doctoral degrees in biology, biochemistry, chemistry, and physics jointly with the Graduate Center. Joint ownership of the doctoral programs will allow the campuses to showcase their program for external funding and to raise the ranking of CUNY programs at the national level. As these are the first doctoral degrees in natural sciences granted by City and Hunter Colleges, a master plan amendment will be required in each case. Calendar number 3C, Hunter College, the Graduate School and University Center, joint Doctor of Public Health degree. This is a first major step towards the creation of a CUNY School of Public Health, proposed by the chancellor, proposed by Chancellor Gosin and expected to be launched in 2010. The accrediting body requires that the lead institution of a collaborative school offer the Doctor of Public Health degree. Therefore, the proposal is designed to enable Hunter College and the future School of Public Health to meet accreditation requirements. Calendar number 3E, Queensboro Community College, Associate of Arts and Sciences in Medical Office Assistant. The graduates of this program are expected to find employment in medical offices and other healthcare settings performing a combination of clerical duties and entry-level clinical procedures such as phlebotomy. Calendar number 3F, LaGuardia Community College, Associate of Arts and Sciences in Radiological Technology. This program prepares students for entry-level positions as radiologic technologists, a profession for which there's a high national demand. Because of the need to satisfy the rigorous demands of the accrediting agency, the college is applying for a waiver of the 60/120 Board Policy. Mr. Chairman, items 3A through 3F were approved by the committee and recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, is there discussion on any of these items, Mr. Chancellor? Do you want to say a word? Just a couple of background pieces of information. Let me say this is a historic moment for this university. It is something that many of us have longed for, for some time. And I'd like to just bring you all back to 2004, when we started this process, working very closely with President Bill Kelly. It was then that I invited a visiting team, very distinguished members of the academic communities across the United States, to take a look at our graduate school and how we deploy resources and how we are organized and issues around governance. We had Dick Atkinson, President Emeritus of the University of California System, Bill Kerwin, the Chancellor of the University of Maryland System, David Ward, President of the American Council on Education, extensive discussions with Jim Duterstadt, former president of the University of Michigan, and Chuck Vest, the former president of MIT. Along this time, Chairman Schmidt and I were having extensive conversations. Chairman Schmidt, as you know, was privileged to be the president of one of the most distinguished institutions in the world with a very, very strong life sciences component at Yale University. And he and I talked a lot about some of the problems, especially in what we perceive to be in science education at the PhD level at this university. All of you know that we have very distinguished programs at the graduate school, and they really dominated in the humanities and the arts and the social sciences. But the natural sciences were really not the areas that we were really spending a lot of time thinking about in this university for a long time. And I'm told about 20 years ago, an attempt was made to look at that particular problem, and nothing happened. And yet, in 2004, we were really determined to look closely at how we are structured in laboratory science areas in particular. That committee that I brought in very, very quickly saw what we saw and said that you really have to take a look at sciences in a very, very global and very, very methodical way. And it was then that I invited Bob Silby, who was then Dean of Science at MIT, to join us for these kinds of discussions, Maureen Goodenough, who is a very distinguished immunologist at the University of Florida, Norma Alawell, who is Dean of the College of Life Sciences at the University of Maryland, and Tom Rosenbaum, Vice President of Argonne National Laboratories and a professor of physics at the University of Chicago. They looked very closely at how we deployed our resources and how we were organized around PhD-level science at the university. And it was from their recommendations and very extensive discussions continuing with Jim Duterstadt and Chuck Vest that we decided to create a task force on doctoral education in the sciences. It was chaired by Selma Botman, our Executive Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, with the assistance of Gillian Small, our university dean for research. And the task force had representation across the university, presidents, provosts, deans of science, many faculty participated. And as a result of that, the task force got to work, rolled up their sleeves, developed committees on joint degrees, governance, recruitment, teaching, students. We did it from top to bottom. The task force completed their work in January in 2007, almost three years after the initial foray in taking a look at doctoral education. And I'm pleased to say to you tonight that as a result of a number of our presidents standing up and saying, we agree that we must do something a little different than we have in the past in doctoral education, we, for the first time this year, will deploy 90 doctoral fellowships, for the first time truly being competitive on a national level. Those 90 scholarships will have the same base offer for five years, a relationship between the central administration and the campuses, full tuition, $24,000 stipends, and health benefits. For the first time in our history, truly being competitive. And we are out there now looking to find the very best students that we can. Tonight's resolution is starting with Hunter and City College. And the reason that we start there is that these two institutions are the most mature in the development of a longstanding effort in basic and applied research with impressive track records in acquiring sponsored research. It is our hope and expectation that other campuses that wish to follow in the lead that Hunter and City are doing tonight will come on board, and we will be working with those campuses over the next couple of, three years or so to see if we can move in that direction as well. So this is an important move for us, a tired phrase of a paradigm shift, but it is something of a paradigm shift. And, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, since President Bill Kelly was a partner with us right at the very beginning and really shepherded so much of this through the graduate school, I wondered if I can call on him just to say a couple of comments. And then if there are any questions, Selma Botman, who is seated beside me, can answer any particular questions. So, Bill?
Thank you, Chancellor. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm grateful to have this opportunity to speak about the reorganization of CUNY's doctoral programs in physics, biochemistry, chemistry, and biology. I would second virtually everything that the chancellor just said, don't want to repeat it, but I would want to emphasize the importance of this reorganization for the university's efforts to move forward in research and teaching in the sciences and to stress how important this reorganization is as a critical component of the Decade of Science Initiative, and also underscore the care with which this process has unfolded, the careful measures that have been taken, the consultative processes that have brought people of great distinction to the university to look at our programs, the internal conversations that have happened, the leadership that's been exerted by presidents at all of the colleges, and how very excited we are to have in play 90 fellowships that are competitive nationally. This is something very new for us, to have at steady state 400, 450 fellowships with distinguished young scientists who'll be working at the university. I want to say just a quick word about the implementation strategy that has resulted from this process. It has, as I think most of you know, two key components. I stress this because sometimes it becomes a little tangled. First, out of the process comes the creation of joint degrees between the Graduate Center and Hunter College and City College respectively. That speaks to the resolutions that were for the board today. And second, the preservation of both the current Graduate Center degree and the consorium model that undergirds it, a model that has served this university very well indeed. I want to say a word about the legislative process as well. In May of 2007, the faculty senates at both Hunter College and City College approved the awarding of joint degrees with the Graduate Center in these four disciplines. In December of 2007, the legislative body of the Graduate Center responded to those actions and approved into course the awarding of doctoral degrees jointly by those two colleges and the Graduate Center. And like the chancellor, look forward and expects the subsequent joint degrees from other colleges as those colleges' resources are, come online. On these fundamental actions, absolute clarity abounds. There was some confusion for a brief time at the first CAPR meeting that I would note when some of the internal Hunter and City documents that were intended as background material for SED were mislabeled as letters of intent that had been approved by governance at the Graduate Center. These documents were not degree proposals, nor had they been approved by the Graduate Center. Executive Vice Chancellor Botman set the record straight before CAPR approved the resolutions that are at the board today. These support materials are labeled appropriately in the material that you have. I also want to stress that further curricular changes in each of the four programs will be fully vetted by the appropriate committees and presented to Graduate Council for ratification. In short, the resolutions passed by the three academic senates have been and will continue to be rigorously, scrupulously observed. And I would conclude by echoing what the chancellor has just said about how important this initiative is for the future of the City University. The investment in doctoral education that it underwrites and the emphasis it places on scientific research across the colleges will significantly enhance on scientific research across the colleges will significantly enhance the work of our faculty and students and position CUNY to contribute meaningfully to the future of the City, of the nation, and the world. Mr. Chancellor, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Are there further comments or questions on this? Professor Philip?
Thank you for allowing me to comment. The, this has been a long and intense process. The chancellor and President Kelly described some of it. In fact, there was actually more. Before this process started, there were a number of task forces inside this university. In fact, before our current chancellor became chancellor, examining the state of the science doctoral programs, I, I was a member of one of those task forces, but not all of them, almost about 20 years ago. And it's been a topic of continuing concern. One of the most important problems, of course, is being addressed by this proposal. The provision of suitable doctoral fellowships for science, science doctoral students, including healthcare, including tuition remission, is something that the doctoral programs involved have long asked for and, and of course, were, as a member of two of these doctoral programs, were quite grateful that this is now being, being taken care of. And we know that it's being taken care of with the assistance of all the colleges involved, not only the two joint, proposed joint degree campuses, but all the other campuses that participate in doctoral programs such as Queens, Brooklyn, Staten Island, and so forth. So these are, these are good things. Now, to get to the details, and in any good proposal, there are details. In terms of the item number A, the movement of the engineering programs to City College, of course, this is a considerable, considerable concern to engineering faculty at the College of Staten Island. And I'm happy to report that I've received assurances that those faculty will be, continue to be able to be involved in the program as they have been before. And I'd like to put that in the record, that this is, that we have received such assurances. In terms of the joint degrees in the sciences, I think I should make you aware of the material that's on your desk from Professor Burke, of the Doctoral Faculty Policy Committee, and other material where I think it's clearly the expressed wish of the leadership, faculty leadership of the Graduate Council at the Graduate Center, that the details, the fine print is something that they would like to examine and that they will be examining. In terms of the Doctorate of Public Health at Hunter College, this is something that this university really needs to do, in my opinion personally, and I think in the opinion of many other people. The university needs a stronger presence in applied health sciences such as public health. As you probably recall, we have made a discreet proposal in the area of pharmacy as well. I'd just like to mention that. And of course, we support these things. So, having said that, we were told, and I think this is correct, that the resolution passed by the Graduate Council would be in this packet. I, I have not seen it, but I assume it's there because the Graduate Council leadership thinks that the detailed language of that resolution is important. Thank you.
Yeah, we have the resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, I would like to say a few things. First of all, that while we in the central office had external, conversations with external scientists and leaders of higher education, essentially, the desire for City and Hunter to offer doctoral degrees bubbled up from the faculty and really is a testament to the extraordinary efforts the faculty at City and Hunter have been extending over years and years. And really, they've been laboring in a, in something of a camouflaged way because they did not have doctoral authority. So this is really a partnership. This has been a partnership between the central office and the campuses to recognize the work that faculty on the campuses have been doing. I would also point out that there are no changes in curriculum, there are no changes in academic standards, there are no changes in faculty, that what we are asking the board to vote on is not a new degree program, but rather a degree registration that allows Hunter and City to have doctoral authority. Nothing is changing on the ground. And so I think this is, as the chancellor said, this is a momentous and historic moment for City University. And I think that both the campuses will be, will benefit from doctoral authority, and we look forward to other campuses that aspire to doctoral authority as well, to working hard so that their faculty are grant-funded and research-active and can rise to the level of a doctoral campus.
Very much. Other comments or questions? Yes?
I may make one additional comment. In, in the deliberations at the Graduate Council, and I'm merely a member of that council, not a member of its leadership, it was clear that one concern in the joint, granting of joint degrees was the possible diffusion of a, a single authority over the curriculum, faculty membership, and the certification of degrees. And I think what we've heard today is in accordance with the resolution of the council passed, that these things all remain as they are now, in the hands of the council. Having two separate centers of authority for the science, and I'm speaking about the science doctoral programs, that's Resolution B and D, having separate centers would be disruptive in a very practical way, and we've heard that that will not happen. Thank you.
Ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed, abstentions? Those items carry. Anything further?
Executive Vice Chancellor Baumann also presented an information item to the committee. The City College of New York, Charles B. Rango Center for Public Service. The name of this interdisciplinary center will be to become a national center for promotion of greater diversity in public service. The center, named after the Honorable Charles B. Rango, whose congressional district includes the City College, will promote recruitment of students from underserved populations to prepare for careers as leaders in government and public service. The center's scholarly and outreach activities will be supported primarily by private donations. Thus far, $8,765,000 has been raised from a total goal of at least $30 million. The center will be housed in the building adjacent to the City College campus and will include the Rango Library, the Kent Conference Center, and offices for visiting scholars. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. I know the trustee Shaw has an important engagement, so I'm going to shift the, the order of the agenda and turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Trustee Shaw?
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure it's important, but it's, it's at Baruch, and I don't want to be late. The, the members of the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered three items at the meeting of February 4th, 2008. These action items are listed in the board calendars, calendar items 5A through 5C. Item 5A, resolution accepting the design of the North Building Animal Research Upgrade at Hunter College as prepared by Helper and Architects. Hunter College will renovate the North Building Animal Research Facility to meet the research needs of the institution and to bring the facility into compliance with applicable codes and standards.